I thought that was up in the general.
Oh, yeah.
It is. I was in charge of getting folks.
Well, Larry don't show up, what's Daryl and Daryl gonna do?
And I saw this kid.
That's what I got a question. Should I be there?
He comes in.
Ah, leave the trash.
My son. Craig's a great guy. Mike and Jackie had no one out there.
Oh, really? At least he didn't knock you down.
No.
I hope they'll sing their test.
Seeing on any of the legends.
Your mower. What kind of mower is this? Two right-hand blades? That's a dug mower.
That's how we gotta work this.
Well, I'm glad he put it back together. At least it'll work now. Look at my head. Doesn't look like I've been in the A C all day. You should wipe the sleep out of your eyes before you start running that hopper.
All seven thirty. We're gonna make up for next one.
I'm like. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call. Uh, Mr. Ziski, present. Daryl Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Fevercorn. Deppson. Dan.
Yeah.
Jane Sherman, here. The youngest Daryl. Eric here. Anita Sherman.
I'm here.
Vice Chairman Darlin, here. And myself, Chairman Cable, on the. So. You've all got the agenda for today. Had a chance to look it over. Guess I'm looking for a motion. Okay. Accept the agenda as presented. Um. Minutes.
I did have one thing I noticed, um.
Okay.
At the public hearings, the first one, um.
Oh, we got.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, all in favor of accepting the agenda as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I guess we're good.
Now, we're.
Thank you.
Okay, under the public hearings, um, the first paragraph, uh, well. It says, Mr. Gerard stated, it's a thirty-seven acre lake with a dike at the center, making two lakes, one being twenty-five, the other seventeen, it's supposed to be twelve, not seventeen.
Oh, that's a word, oh, that's a word. It's supposed to be twelve, I said four seventeen. And I missed that as well.
Also. On the same paragraph, you have egg two, egg three. I don't think we have egg three in our.
We could hear over here, what was that, uh, correction?
It was, um, under the public hearings, it says, Mr. Gerard stated that this was a thirty-seven acre lake with a dike in the center, making two lakes, one being twenty-five acres, the other seventeen.
Okay.
It's supposed to be tw- twelve.
Okay, thank you. Is that correct, Ed?
What's that?
Twenty-five and twelve acres on your property. The lakes.
I, I don't know if that's. Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, but it was thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven total.
Do we have an egg, right? Okay.
Would you, would you add, add the, uh?
This is for just a second a minute. Okay?
Yeah.
Do we have any other? Corrections?
You didn't tell me that. I'm gonna strike out the other one and just make it so it. It always, it changes it for me.
Well, once you start typing, then it will start itself.
Yeah.
Not in the next.
Well, it cha- but it changes because it's. By auto correct, the wrong spelling is the right spelling in my computer, so I gotta change that. Actually, I have already changed it, so.
It's on the next page.
Okay. So, there's two places?
Yes. Three places.
All right, thank you. And again, I apologize.
Do you have any other corrections?
You know, I was, I was playing, if you were trying to get it.
Well, hearing nothing else, I will say, Anita, this, this is very nice to think of this much, you, uh, but I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yep. I read it a couple of times, and still miss the fact that seventeen and twenty-five and that.
Moved to approve between seven minutes, that's the minute.
Moved by Vice Chair Darlin, second. Howard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. I guess we're to our first citizen's time.
Well, how come you guys are doing this on a, um, holiday? I was, uh, curious.
Question. Yep.
It was presented to.
Already, and I got an intended mail that didn't make the corrections, so I guess, uh, Anita was shown up.
It was, uh, approved at the December, uh, meeting.
Did anybody realize though that this was.
I don't believe so.
This is a national. Well, yeah, at the time of Sunday, we were.
It's observed.
Well, you're all fresh and ready for this.
Oh, I worked.
They say meat, we haven't been a dairy farmer who works three hundred sixty-five days a year, cows don't need a calendar. And I combined meat all day yesterday and today.
Yeah, but I would think.
I guess I didn't think much about.
Well.
But, yeah, we, we. We're not quite that, we're quite hard to love, and the work is, 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 it's, it's, it's right out.
Is there anything else for citizens' time? Anybody else for citizens' time? Hearing none, we'll close citizens' time. Go on to new business. Um, we all received the packet, I believe Ron delivered most of them. I was glad to pick mine up here.
And if you can speak up, we did have somebody saying, it sounds like it's breaking up, but I wonder if they just can't hear.
Oh, okay. Well, we're gonna, uh, Kevin and Michelle Baber. Um, site plan approval on a point three acre pond. To be used in the building of their home. Everybody has gotten their paperwork, had a chance to go through it?
Property located at one one seven three Oakley Road. Maybe Michigan, and from the plant, it's part of an acre, and your depth is about twelve feet. And I was taking it off the top ground. And all the setbacks from the best people letters. Ron emailed that call.
Right.
Yeah, I got another message. It sounds like it's scarbled, but again, I think it's just because of my equipment in here, but hopefully by next month we'll have a new.
Or a few months.
Uh, everything's dark up there. Start pushing the button.
Hey. I got batteries, guys.
Black one's back.
You guys need batteries, you got it. Got what you need, guy? Hello? I got spare batteries, Daryl. Hello?
Sounds like you oughta put them in there.
I do got a couple, yep. One first one. If that don't work, we should put them back in the drawer or something next one. Yeah. That better, hey?
You're the property owners? Um, if you wanna make any comments to us, or we're not anything, or if you're having questions or not, so. So, if you've got fifty foot setback, fifty foot, and one hundred seventy. Just a memory.
There you go.
Working?
Three hundred two thousand dollars. Yep.
And the second.
That's why.
Since you can find that, the, the, any impact on neighbors, the water, water migration.
Now, I, I guess anybody got any questions? I went through it. I thought it seemed sort of straightforward, having, uh. I don't know the old ordinance from the new ordinance. Um, let's see. But I thought it looked like they were covering that what they needed.
Well, according to the email from the state, it said there was no map, and the site plan direction arrow was incorrect.
Yeah, but then, it, uh, the north arrow has been divided on the site plan itself, however, it appeared to be incorrect. But, um. On these, they were correct. Where the north is. It's like a scale on the right-hand side. Often easier to try to link the line, more, uh, different personality.
It's Siroki, right?
Uh, one question, are you going to do the physical digging or the contractor to build your house, and they're gonna take that, uh?
Estimation, company's gonna do the product.
Once they start construction, digging, waters, and stuff, the house and that.
I found the discrepancy in there. And. If this is a magnetic north side down here, where it says five sides, point three one one acres.
Oh, yeah, this is.
Down there, they got.
Oakley Road up here.
And a big blueprint. I was looking at that once, and I spent all the time reading this, and it's correct on me.
Okay. Well. We know we're wrong. I'm finding that. So. All right, is there anything else?
Yeah, I got a drawing off of the email, it says there's no map or drainage plan for flow. And we need a deed restriction.
Yeah, if we approve it, that there's a deed restriction, that required a deed restriction that property matters, that's under, uh, the general standards, number A, number five.
And it has a drainage plan for flow? These are just all comments up in the email.
Like, there's, there's no stream, there's no, it's not a lot of nothing, so. They do it again?
I have one question, when they put the, uh, the test hole for where your pond is gonna be, that they dug this twelve feet that they had water, at what level did they give the water? My first read, I thought, they didn't get water till they got to twelve feet, that's a really tricky area.
No, it was like about twelve inches.
Okay, that's not a bad. Basically, anywhere in town should be down to a three feet, you can't even find water. And when I saw that twelve feet, that's where they found the water, I'm thinking, it must be in a couple of like hills. That was just because it matches the depth of the pond, if you guys know.
And it says neighbors to the east might have sucked it, it's not noted on the plans, but it's okay. And now, is the performance guarantee needed?
I've heard of a tenth of an acre for all.
If you didn't catch it, the pond is almost a football field from where the house is. Who's the contractor that built your house?
What, we're using, uh, homes by Josh Doyle?
It's on there. What's? Yeah. Well, trust me, the drawings and last meeting together.
Well, the very last one is a miniature of this one.
Yep.
And it's the one, it's the only one that's involved with, with the north side.
Yeah, it's the big one.
Yep.
This, this one's correct.
So, and the rest of them are all correct, so. I didn't catch them.
They're shrinking. There's not much variation in my.
Any other questions, Karen? Well.
Eleven seven eighty-three Oakley Road, maybe mission. Property number of fifty-eight ten. Zero thirty-three, zero twenty-three eighty. So, this is constructed point three acre pond.
All right.
No good to leave the property.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
You got a, um, you got the name.
Yeah.
I'll get it.
Yeah, they probably read it all out, probably, personally, well, we're good. Any opposed, let's finish this. Thank you. Motion carried. Welcome to the township. It's not my fault this time, other than I did drop my paper. All right. Next thing on the agenda for new business. Large solar energy systems.
Well, it said that, uh, township board. Accepted it, but they want changes, but they.
I have not heard from anybody saying that there was supposed to be any changes to that, except Mr. Nichols.
Penny, Penny was gonna put together a list of questions, and that's on the, uh, draft, uh, email minutes that I got. Penny was gonna put a list of questions together for the planning commissions, I, I, I got a, I got a copy of, uh, the, uh. Uh, draft minutes, and I'm sure Anita could pull it up too, if need be, but, um, need to find that. And I'll read, I'll read what it says. We had, um.
Thanks for the motion. Yep.
Yeah.
I, I was listening to it, I wasn't having, I thought the approval is written.
They did approve it as written, but they want. They want an overlay, Ron brought up an overlay for the township, and I should like you, I mean, you brought it up, Ron, you wanna tell the rest of the planning commission, uh. What you're looking for. Board, they thought it would be in violation of the master plan to have the worst-case scenario that you have a thriving proliferation of solar fields. Ron on township, and the five zero vote, um, said they would set the findings that you guys had in the ordinance for one of the revisions to include solar only in the order. And then it made the initiated, uh, zoning map amendment for the creation.
Made that? So, like, I don't feel like heard from, not heard from Penny.
Yeah, I'm looking for those minutes right now.
So, my question is, is, uh, if you create an overlay district, you are doing what government should never do? Pick winners and losers?
No, because of.
Whoever's in the overlay district could potentially have more property value, Dean, because these people might be more interested. They're not gonna want the whole township anyways, because the high lines are only in the specific portion. So, I'm not really sure what the purpose is.
So, this is, this is what was in the, uh, draft minutes. Large-scale, and this is number two, under new business, large-scale utility solar ordinance amendments. Amendments were sent to the board from the planning commission chair and cable. Z A, Ron Youngblood, sent a letter to the board in regards to an overlay district. Questions that Supervisor Turner has will be seen, will be sent in writing to the planning commission. And I, I haven't got any minutes unless you got them, Ron. I, I'm just going off with the minutes.
Well, I'll make a motion to table it until we get that information. Correct?
I did hear from Brian O'Shea, and he said that he couldn't make the meeting, that he couldn't be here. And, uh. Okay, so the overlay is not quite ready?
The overlay district creation itself has already been set upon, the chief thinks it looks fine. And I'm waiting on the overlay district, because the, uh.
I haven't seen it.
How does it go with the attorney if we haven't even had a chance?
You don't have to, the board initiated the amendment that goes to technical review, then a public hearing before the planning commission, and then further review after the fire, where you said it was in twelve point oh four.
I guess that's what I was trying to lead up to, doesn't that mean a public hearing?
After technical review, yes.
As the way the motion at the board meetings, and the ordinance that we have is in place and stands, right? Our motion, our, that, because I read, since place, I read through and listened to the, the stuff.
Yep.
This was moved and approved, so this is in place, this is actually, it should have dates on that.
Going to that show to the board, because the board approved it, the findings you guys made, and sent it back for revision to approve that it's only a solar.
Went back up, this is what went to the board.
That's right.
And this is what was approved by the board.
And that's what the minutes say, correct?
That's a lot.
That's, and that's from what, the minutes say then, like, took place as a parliamentarian was done backwards, because what you would have done is you would have had a motion to amend this, that you would have said that you wanted to have an overlay, and then you would amended the motion to approve this with that condition, but you moved, and it was voted on to approve this, so this stands as it. Right then, there's a secondary, that you have another motion, that you want the planning commission to send, consider something else to amend this. So, we are going through the process to amend the existing ordinance, because they already have adopted that, right, from what I listened to, what I've read through what the minutes said. So. But, backing up, I know in some areas that wherever they're proposing solar, which was the hot thing back here, year or two ago, and everybody wants electric cars, they want renewable energies, they don't want nuclear, they don't want coal, now they don't want windmills, they don't want solar, nobody rode a horse coming in here. So, the challenge for the folks that are doing a good thing, trying to come up with additional energy, because we need energy to run our economy, which is what the solar companies are doing. You guys are bumping into some headaches in townships all over the state right now, trying to get your projects done, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's always.
Yeah.
Something that you.
So, so the suggestion or the concept of an overlay or a district, in a way buys public goodwill, it's like, we're saying, hey, we're gonna come into your community, and this is the only place we're gonna put it, that's it. So, then you have appeased the community goodwill, but as Dan said, you pick winners and losers by doing something like that. Now, if you go back in our township, we were approached by a cable company. The cable company wanted exclusive franchise, and they write them up by ordinance, it's an exclusive franchise. Had we done an exclusive franchise out here, the only place that would have had cable is along the North County line, because the company in Belleville, that requested it, wanted to get the mileage for their cable service. It basically didn't catch anybody. So, then, what we did is.
And nobody else could come in.
And nobody else could come in, because they. And nobody else could come in, because they had locked it up, they had fish in a barrel. Economically, how few homes we have, so we made it, because Leroy's on the board, we made a non-exclusive franchise ordinance. So it's not exclusive, so anybody can come in. That created competition, so that helps you get a competition for you to keep the cable rate. That's why Collingwood down there at the Navy has cable from out of Monroe. But anyway, because we did it non-exclusive, we didn't exile anybody. Same way for the gas company, the gas companies came in, they wanted exclusive, they wanted exclusive. Because then they were just gonna put it where they wanted. We made it non-exclusive out here, so then it became a race. Because back in the nineties, everybody thought the belt was going gangbusters, because it had some flow. But they thought it was going gangbusters. And so Mishcon came in and they shoved highs in my first, in every road in the township. They had, they had yet to basically cover what the cost was.
No, they're, they're screwed Penny over pretty good. She got, she got, if she wants to get gas, it's gonna cost her like thirty, twenty thousand dollars. Something like very, very crazy.
You have to have a, like.
But everybody, the next door can get it for, for free. I got it for free.
Back, back when it came in.
No, no, like, a month ago, or a year ago.
Really? Because they've got all their conditions and the cost of fees. But because also now with some of the things that gone with the state, where you can buy electricity from different suppliers. You make it non-exclusive, so that way you create competition that helps people check your costs. That's how we managed to do it, by creating a solar overlay that was essentially just made, you know, no offense to you folks, but it made essentially exclusive ordinance, an exclusive franchise, you folks, that where you've got it, and where you know that you're gonna be. And if you got all the contracts locked up for the future, that's the only place it's gonna happen, and nobody else. And so, in a way, it also impacted other people's property values. But the governor made that. Solar qualifies on all PA one sixteen procs. Ag one, ag two. She put that in. And she did that. So for us to put in overlay, we're picking winners and losers.
And consumers' energy is, uh, gonna retire all of its coal burning power plants by the year twenty twenty-five. It is going to be fifteen years ahead of schedule. Uh, it's already, uh, they're set up to buy four gas, uh, natural gas, uh, power generating plants. And they're going with, uh, solar and wind. They're gonna start expanding into those markets. So, um, that'll be coming to a theater near you as well.
Consumers?
Consumers.
I'll come, I'll.
They're fifteen years ahead of schedule on that.
Now, looking at the, um, proposed, uh, solar rate that I see, it's pretty large sections, but I know there has to be uncertain power line areas. And I think we only have like two in the area. So.
The transition kind of creates solar areas.
It does for itself, unless something changes with that, a center TCI, or how they put transmission lines in, or what they elect to look up. But on the same note, you create an overlay, and let's say fifteen years from now, if they shut down all these plants. And all of a sudden, we start rotating brownouts, because we've limited the situation, and we don't let windmills go up in certain places. We got folks that talk about microcord bats with windmills. I think if you killed a bat with a windmill at forty-five RPM, it'd probably be a gene tool, vapor.
If I may, that's the losers in the scenario. You guys loudly telling me to rezone. So if any interested party outside of the overlay district wanted to do it, then they could just apply for rezoning. So say, the whole concept of the overlay district is that the board go away now, we got rezoning for this, it's getting out of hand. Now that we got all these solar fields everywhere, on this side, that side, the other side, we're not gonna process any more rezonings. Because now we realize we're going against the vice master plan. That's the theory and concept behind this, there's no real losers, six, what, twelve fifty for a rezoning application. And there's probably two hundred parcels in the created overlay district. And if I can remember, if I turn to Bonnie's email correctly, she follows a good idea.
No, I, I agree with table one, but.
Yep, we have motion to table it.
The concept of even doing it, if you pick winners and losers. And then we're gonna require that people have to go through for rezoning, that's the situation, and it's basically approved on all PA one sixteen ground by the governor's mandate. So, and then, here's, here's the other scenario. So if you're, you're worried that some large landowner is gonna go to solar, that tells you, must be farming isn't doing very well. Or somebody's family wants to cash out their estate. That would be the only reason. Because most guys, they're really apprehensive about selling their farmland to grow into the solar. But with where the economics are, and it's a global market, that's pretty, these are different scenarios where some guys are actually considering.
What about like buy you a land, uh, residence, and start getting too many, you know, solar farms? That'd be my opinion.
But on the same.
I mean, we're gonna be creating revenue to the township, but we're also gonna be losing value to some of the whole, some of the township here.
Because after what we went through last meeting, there was so much social media talking about the planning commission and different things. Why do people move out here to run the township? Well, sure, not for the roads, it's not for the water. Just because you got open space, it's rural. And why is it open space and rural, because there's a number of farmers and families, and used to be farmers, that are still left to be around out, they're trying to make a living there. And we saw the last parcel that we just dealt with, that the family lost it trying to farm, and another family's lost it trying to farm. That there are some areas that it's, it's just very difficult to make a living. So on the same note, if you're gonna hamstring or pick the winners and losers on this situation, you know, if farmers are keeping our property. If you bought that house, or you bought a piece of property and you're gonna build a house because there was a beautiful cornfield across the field, well. You only owe to the road, you don't own that cornfield. You don't own your bush yet. If you bought, there's woods next door to you, because there are beautiful trees and you loved it. And gee, I was saying, they go hunting every fall, you don't like people hunting. Or they harvest trees every ten years, that's what it is. Trees are a crop, just like corn, you harvest it out. So people get upset, well, it's simple. If you want to see trees next door to you all the time, buy it. If you want to see a cornfield across the road, buy it. Because we only own for a property line, we only got control for a property.
How many acres did they just sell on Palmer Road?
That was two hundred acres, and that was an investment that bought it. It wasn't a farmer.
Never who bought it? How many did they just sell?
They sold, well, actually, they sold fourteen hundred and thirty-six acres. The farmers decided it was, it was sold out, and it was a very large group, that investment group, that people, you know, you got. You got your money in taxable bonds, non-taxable bonds, you got utilities. Number of them, they want a little bit in real estate. This company caters specifically to investors in real estate. And that's how that money came in, a lively investor banker out of Chicago, now only property in one of the township finally has it. Now, if the requirement's not profitable, they're gonna be looking at other things. And it may not necessarily be solar, which makes no noise, no sound, no smells.
Yeah. Let's have point of order. There was any, uh, a motion on the floor, I didn't hear a second.
I did.
Doug seconded. Jim motioned. Table this. The next meeting until it comes up, September, what do we think? Can we hear from the board?
Were we still waiting on Bonnie on that too, um, Ron?
When the board sent back that they had a solar overlay district, language added, and they don't actually think that, they don't have to go back. But I won't do any more work on overlay district, tell us who's out.
Okay.
Because the intent from Tom and Penny was the creation of a solar overlay. I can't hear you. I said the intent was Tom and Penny, and the others, people that voted, uh, trustee from county, maybe you were at the last minute. The whole intention was for there to be a solar overlay.
Yeah, but I'm just going off what the minutes were. Penny was gonna send some questions for the planning commission. We did not get any questions. If people on this planning commission got them, give me a copy, because I did. And that's in the minutes.
And Bonnie's got a copy that she reviewed for the solar overlay, and yet we haven't seen it yet, how do we have it on the agenda then?
That's the language for the ordinance, we approved solar overlay. Creation of solar overlay district was only that. Initiated by the board, and then they're going back for review. And then, once that's on a technical review, prior to public hearing, much prior to public hearing, you guys go on your copies to review to take the public feedback from the public hearing. Which the purpose of public hearing is to take our show, our content.
It shouldn't have been on the agenda.
Alright. Alright.
That's the language in the ordinance.
Alright. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Table this. Oppose. Motion carried. We are on to unfinished business. Well. The catch is, is we had more than one. I don't know, I failed to put dates on them, or, you know, when the fuck got updated. Um, so.
I think I received one by February twenty-four, twenty-one, the last one, I think. At the bottom, it says, uh, extraction operation is issued February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Look at this, it's just the copy of February sixteen, or, I don't know, what is this?
This is the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
When I received it, it was in that pack that, that, uh, the, we, 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 we got that pack of information, that, uh, holder with the number of pages in it.
Yeah, that's more on.
I just got a lot of time, you know? Understanding, you know, I think.
Well. Kinda had, but I didn't know there was some change.
When'd you get them?
The final one is, uh, May, when you, when you.
Yeah, Ron said so.
But then, the one that was given to us on May first was incorrect.
What was the date on that one, Jeff, that's my.
Well, there, there is no date on that.
Oh. Okay.
Again, that might, this one that I'm talking about might be different than the one Doug, Doug's talking about.
Ron, Ron gave us one, what, last week.
No, exactly. The May. Yeah, I, I.
There were a couple of things that, uh, the fly one, I think, a couple of things that they had to do.
Yep.
About this, the, after visiting one, and that was a slightly different version.
Are we talking about extract, uh, five, six, zero, four?
Correct.
This is way too much.
That went through page by page, it was, uh, May twenty seventh. Yeah, if you wrote it down, the one that was given to us on May twenty-four.
I swear, I. It was, it was five, six, four, five, it was five, I'm just.
No, this was, he gave us, he delivered all of us. All the time, you know, all that stuff. There's nothing over here, because I want to do it, and I think we have to, yeah, the whole stuff, and then that one, I think, he said, he had, he said, that was worth, or less, or whatever. And so then he gave us this copy on, uh, on the May fourth thing, that's like, I don't know. And then we made.
Okay.
Because then. This year, when you, on it, in, uh, in, uh, March. March twenty-ninth, this.
Thanks.
Oh, the context was, is, is, not if the, by, 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 by.
Extractive. Ready to move forward, am I gonna wait for Jimmy?
Listen, Frank, you gotta use the one that you got on the May twenty-four, not the one that you have in the five.
Is that the one that you got?
Is that the one that's initiated February sixteen?
Has it got a?
Yeah.
Got a date down there, the biomes is initiated, it's February sixteen. That's one Leroy and I are working on.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's the one that.
This has about twenty pages to live. Twenty pages.
I, I, I don't know, I can't find it, man. I, I don't know if it's in my truck or.
I've got the original, you want me to make copies?
Could you do that for me, please?
Make two copies of one, right? And then pass it, pass this to me, sure. Put it down. But I mean, they started not doing it, and they had it, uh, and then they said, oh, I'll. Okay, that's how I started doing it, too. It's like, I didn't tell you the date. Tyler, I'm reading for it. And, uh, no, because, no, she didn't want to play transition, that's, that's worse. You got a girlfriend next to you.
This is the one that's that, see. That's one of the big old partners. All the work.
Where the expand to?
More, sure, yes, I got.
This one wants me to.
Oh, yeah, this is, um, this is, yeah.
See you, man.
We do, but. Oh, see, we cram it on through and we work with. And then you shut it up on the eighth, twenty ninth. Yeah. But yeah, this is one that's not approved. And that's one. And you got spectrum. And they made it.
Most of the neighborhood guys.
And so the one that we got, we got. This is the one that got approved. Right, correct, right. That's why we're having to review it all. Yes, and so now it's different. And then it's like, it changed, uh, acceptable.
Yeah.
Those accepting roads to be finally accepted by.
Where are you at, so we can follow?
For me.
Are you in the listening?
Well, we're waiting for that original.
Yep.
The one that you and I are looking at is the one that high floors, not correct.
Well.
You probably got a buddy.
Oh, yeah, I got a buddy. All that, that's. So you didn't find it, we're just waiting on copies then?
I. Yeah.
So. Doug?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyone on the team, like. It's weird, even after four, I thought they. Probably just extended. I, I thought air condition should be addressed. Then they get all this.
Well, the trouble is, the air condition is in the part of the. The unit is inside the room, so you don't have it like in the furnace. It's right there. There was a hot water leak on the north side of the building. Had to be, uh, boiler.
Wasn't that replaced?
Oh, yeah, it still does. Still not in air condition.
Yeah.
It's like cameras, you know, we had an old.
Yeah, that sounds like. That's the point.
Yeah. I thought they were approved.
No, we did.
All I got to say, that's what he does.
That was where the people according to.
Okay. He works hard.
Well, I know.
All right.
What's that? Yeah, bring your chair over, you can get a close.
He blocking it.
There's another one over there. You get behind me and Daryl though. You'd be blocking it off for the whole.
That's the one.
One for me?
I tried to. What I said.
Had mineral, I just didn't, there's no way to go over this. It's up to almost twenty-five, I'm gonna quit. Cause I thought your neighbor going out, he goes up his ass.
You think you put it twenty-three, man? You promise you don't add twenty, you got it.
Okay, who did he get it on? Had a time.
Yep.
That's not it?
Yep.
That is it?
I think this is what, November of nineteen, is this what we're going back to, Doug?
Oh, I thought you wanted to do one that's in our book right now.
Oh, you know what's this one? It's not our.
Yeah.
This is what's in.
Okay, put the page. Cause this is the.
This is what's in the book now.
Okay, correct. You're highlighting the difference.
I think I got this. This is what I.
Would I make copies of? Yeah, the actual. Correct.
Truly turning, but we did all the work.
Which I got back here. I got that. Bless you. You still make some progress.
My lines. So, but, but any copies top?
If you want to gloss here. Yeah, well, all the work was. You were in this in nineteen, this is the ending then.
Yeah, it, it finished up in May of nineteen.
So it was so good that Ron said we needed to go back because it wasn't done correct, otherwise this would stand right.
The way it was initiated. So anyway, then this is what we received there on the twenty-fourth, this one. Which Ronnie corrected, uh, this one. It's, uh, we're processing.
So, so what is. Copying? Well, I don't have, but if I could just look up what you. It's, I got it at home, so I don't.
I was gonna say, if you want, I can make copies of that in color of what you have for your, what your changes.
Yep.
To see where your discrepancies.
Let me look at the, uh, one that, like, put a big cross on the one that. Yeah. Right here. Let's see. Oh, I need, cause the, uh, the one that says mark, or says February sixteen at the bottom. The one that was originally given us in, uh, May first, that one is not any good.
Right.
It looks exactly like.
Like the one you have.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one that we'd use up to public hearing.
Yep.
Public hearing. Initiated February sixteen.
Yeah, well, no, we got a second one that night.
Which one you gonna work?
Yeah, that's what we gotta figure out.
If you wanna do this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And like, see, that's the existing one.
Correct. Yeah, and that's what I have.
I got it.
Okay.
That's one of my, this is. Put them all away but that.
Yeah.
This is the only. Now, that's one of the.
November.
We just said I was good.
Just said I didn't do it right. I forget exactly what we need to do. So we started working on it again to do it right.
You know, no questions.
Look at that little bugger. Cute as hell, ain't he? He does?
Right now, again, I'll, I'll grab.
Grab me the thread.
And then I break it down.
Go back.
That's. A little bit concrete, screw.
I'll put that screw, yeah, he does hunt. I wear gloves now though. Well, I keep nice.
Get some other kids to the parsonet?
My ones. My. My, my, small. She's. She's. I was.
This is your extract of operation. I've got this.
That's, that's the original date. That's the original.
Excellent.
Original, but, yeah. But see, I got a, uh, six, nine, or whatever. That's the one that's in the book.
I don't know why.
No.
This one, this one, that's.
Around.
That's what we did from the back. One that's gonna.